Well, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. As a welcome to our virtual guest, we ask that you mute your microphones for the meeting. The mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunity. I'd like you to join me in the hump allegiance. The flag is right back on the report. The pledge of allegiance is verified by the United States of America and through the great power of the Constitution stands our nation unencumbered in the midst of the struggle for
Liberty and justice for all.
It was, the agenda was posted with the Lake Mills leader on June 4th. It was placed on the website and it was also posted at the Lake Mills Post Office.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Don Delaney.
Here.
Amy Litter.
Here.
David Rado.
Here.
Robert Temprio.
Here.
Are there any revisions to the agenda?
I would ask that you remove action item K, which is discussion of the budget, and we would like to move that particular item to a special meeting on June 22nd.
If that date works. Should we end it? I'm sorry. It's been a long day. It's been a very long day.
Do we have a time for the June 22nd meeting?
We're open.
We're open to suggestions. We can talk about that maybe during, in one of our reports. Maybe mine or
Sure. Right, so could I have a motion then to approve the amended agenda? I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
You want to second it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into the board reports. Mr. Rado.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know, we received a thank you note from Chris Rummering, one of our bus drivers, for the plan that we sent her, to pay our respects for her mother who passed recently.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, there are, there are times that are, that are bittersweet, and this is one of those times, which is indeed bittersweet. I'd like to take a few moments to recognize the strike, the Lake Mills alumni, your return to the district after serving 15 years as a speech-language pathologist at Watertown, your bright school district. For the last 20 years, at this school district, you've served as director of pupil services and special education, director of summer school, Lake Mills Elementary School, assistant principal, Lake Mills High School principal, junior optimist advisor, and you became district administrator in July of 2016. In November 2018, the Lake Mills High School academic edition and multi-purpose facility were successfully passed by the Lake Mills community, and you played no small role in having that become a reality. And looking at all these things that you have done, the strike, I swear you were a twin. I can't imagine one person doing, doing all these things. And I think you have the sincere gratitude of my colleagues on the board, past board members who've had an opportunity to work with you through the years, and the community in general. When you said that you wanted to retire, my first reaction was, you can't. But apparently, apparently, you're, you prevailed. And so, at this point, I would like to present you with the token of the board's appreciation, and I understand you may have an affinity for bases. And, let's see if I can do this offhand, injuring myself again. This, this base
Can I help you?
There. That's a ticket. Yeah. Got the picture?
Great.
Okay, I'll keep that in your
You've got it. So, and it's got the school logo on it. And, again, you have our sincere gratitude for, for all your hard work and, and leadership through the years. I recall back when we were, we were interviewing for the position in 2016, and you came, you came with a plan. And, and you implemented the plan, and, and we are very grateful for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A round of applause for that.
Um, can I just?
You, you may say a word or two, yes.
I actually, in the craziness, didn't really think about this being my last meeting, that maybe I should prepare to say something. That was kind of lost on me until I saw this in the agenda, so I really didn't prepare anything. But, uh, thank you. This is beautiful and very much appreciated, and, uh, just my heartfelt thanks to the board for your confidence and support. And, uh, I'll have some other comments at graduation, because I am very, very hopeful that that is going to be a, a great celebration of our time together, and, uh, one last chance for me to, to share some thoughts with you.
Well, again, uh, we have not seen the last of you.
Probably not.
Uh, we can move into the administrative reports. Mr. Grindal.
Hi, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, yep.
Just an update on summer school and where we are in summer school. We surveyed parents about two weeks ago on their interest for summer school, and the numbers came back good enough that we thought we could run summer school. So, we redid our registration for classes to allow students to choose any class that they wanted to choose. Uh, and we're running an asynchronous and synchronous time where there's some live time and, uh, there's some activities that students will be doing on their own, outside of the typical summer school hours. Uh, when our registration closed on June 3rd, uh, we went through and went through the numbers, which was last week Wednesday, uh, and we do think that we have enough FTE to run summer school and make it financially feasible, uh, and also a great learning experience for some of our students. Uh, July, when July comes, uh, we'll definitely reevaluate where we are in July, uh, and what we can offer, uh, going forward, and if there's face-to-face, if there's not face-to-face. But for right now, virtual summer school for full session is a, is a go for, for us.
Great, well, thank you very much. Ms. Thompson, elementary school principal and director of curriculum.
Hello, everyone. As we closed out the school year with virtual learning, all of our grade level teams and our departments across the district came together to identify all of their essential learning targets at the end of this school year, so the end of the fourth quarter, in order to plan and prepare for next year. So, they shared those essential learning targets with, um, next year's grade level teams or department teams. So, then those teams took those learning targets and were able to prepare assessments and instruction to be able to hit the ground running in the fall, depending on what the fall is going to look like. We used some professional development time at the end of this school year, stored all of those documents so that they're ready for the start of next school. Curriculum news for this summer, I've already begun working with our science team. We had Kevin Anderson from DPI work with us to give us an overview of the new updated standards. Um, and then this summer, each of the science teachers will be looking at materials and start to think about how they want to renew and refresh their science curriculum for the coming year. The arts department is also on track for the summer curriculum work we'll be meeting in July. And then our people service team, we will also be working together to look at our social emotional learning across the school district, kindergarten through 12th grade. I also just wanted to take a moment to address the protests against racism that are sweeping our country and highlight that our district have taken over the years to promote anti-racism through education. So, I'm going to go through just some of the things that we've done over the last several years. We're not perfect and we still have a lot of work to do, but we feel strongly that together we can be a lighthouse community to show the way for others. Andrea Graham, who is a Lake Mills Elementary School parent and a second grade teacher in Madison, provided children book recommendations to me that I was able to share with our elementary families. Our resources that I'm going to be putting together, uh, we share those out via email, but then we're going to also put together a website and our school page for other resources for families and educators to be able to access as needed. Um, I'm going to be participating in listening sessions with Chief Selk from the Lake Mills Police Department after his community called action via Facebook last week. We've had lots of conversations into professional development over the years regarding equity in our schools. Some of the few examples that we have are that at the elementary school, we use responsive classroom, and at the middle school nurtured heart, both of which are strategies that foster self-responsibility and fun. And those strategies are culturally responsive, make sure that all members of our classroom communities can be heard, conflict solved as a community, and diversity of the classroom compositions celebrated. All of our staff members have been trained in trauma-informed care with additional extensive studies happening through staff meetings, book clubs, and in-service training. I also wanted to highlight our reading and writing curriculum, which is part of Teachers' College Reading and Writing Project. One of the most important things that we can do is to raise the level of literacy for all children as an act of social justice. Our curriculum is looked at very closely, making sure that it hits the competencies for equity. The Teachers' College reviews the student annually, moving the scorecard from the Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and the Transformation of Schools. And they score quite high each year and then continue to make the rise to improve. And each year, we curate our classroom and school libraries to make sure our collections are diverse and represent all people of the world. Each year, I give read aloud books for a classroom with an emphasis on authors and stories that traditionally have been silenced. Um, this spring, we purchased a large number of new titles for kindergarten and first grade to ensure that progressive titles authored by a variety of voices are in the hands of our most, our youngest and our beginning readers. Professional development, each building has been doing book clubs, staff, staff book clubs. Some of the titles that we've read are Invicted, Poverty and Profit in the American City, Our Kids, The American Dream and Crisis, The Hate U Give. This summer, a large group of teachers are going to be reading it, Despite the Best Intentions, How Racial Inappropriate Inequality Thrives in Good Schools by Amanda Lewis and John Diamond. Um, and another book that some of us will be looking at is called, this book is anti-racist, points lessons on how to wake up, take action, and do the work of people of equal. Um, over the course of the last handful of years, we've had teachers and administrators participate in the Integrative Comprehensive System for Equity with professors from UW Milwaukee and UW Madison. This past year, the administration participated in the National Equity Project with CISA II. One of their homework assignments from that, those sessions was to watch the Netflix documentary 50, and highly recommend it if you haven't seen it yet. Um, and then also teachers and administrators worked with Sharaki Hawley and culturally and linguistically responsive teaching. Additionally, each administrator has been trained in harassment and bullying, bullying complaint investigations. As an administrative team, we are dedicated to address every issue that is brought to our attention. Students are encouraged to say, see something and say something. Students have opportunities for meeting local curriculars and clubs to learn about the community and be part of the solution. This is not an exhaustive list of activities that we've been a part of, it's just highlighting some of the things that we have done and will continue to do to make sure that our community is open and inclusive and welcoming for all of our students and all of our families.
Amanda, during that presentation, you were kind of breaking up once in a while. Could you attach those notes into board docs and maybe also share that with Sarah so she has a, um, I mean, they are in your note form, but at least you had some of those titles and activities. Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Thompson? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda.
Ms. Brockford.
Just two quick things that I want to highlight. This Thursday and Friday of this week, our new audit firm will be in our district to begin the audit, and then they will return again the end of July. We look forward to working with this new firm and getting another, you know, a new perspective of our operations and suggestions of how we can improve. Secondly, I am disappointed because I really was hoping I'd have the 2021 budget ready to present to you, but I don't. And, um, we're, you know, I'm using now the revised summer school numbers, which I talked about at the finance committee, and the zero increase in calculating the revenue limit. I, I am requesting that we have a second meeting in June. One suggestion was June 22nd, but if that doesn't work, we can look at other dates too, um, to review the budget and, you know, have more time to dedicate to it and, um, then have a draft budget to present at the annual meeting. So, now would be a time if we want to talk about the learning at, or
Was, was there any concerns about the 22nd?
No. Okay, what time? What? I
Is six o'clock fine?
Six o'clock for, for me.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Okay, so six o'clock, June 22nd.
And I appreciate your flexibility. I'm sorry. You don't have
You're responsible for everything.
I'll tell you, it's been a challenging time. It's, I never thought I'd experience this in my career. I mean, never. It's just been challenging.
Wendy, Wendy, you're fine. We're good.
And, and just to reiterate, that budget is really a guesstimate because we know the legislature will be reconvening to do a budget repair bill. We are making assumptions what that might look like, but we really don't know. So, and Amy, for you in this process, so we look at a preliminary budget, go move ahead with that at the annual meeting in July, and then when the final number's coming in October, that's when we really finalize it.
But we have a second meeting, always a heartfelt word. So, just to get prepared.
Yeah, so it's been one meeting a month.
So, we're on pins and needles for months.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Schreick, just
I too have a very, uh, full, uh, list of things to talk with you about. First and foremost, I wanted to announce for the whole community, when we met in facilities committee this month, we talked about closing the buildings and grounds until June 30th. It, that included the tennis courts, the disc golf course, and the campus field. It is our intent to open those at like six o'clock AM on July 1st. Many, many questions have come in about that, and we wanted to be really transparent that we are as anxious to open those facilities as anyone, and, um, we will roll that out July 1st. Next thing I wanted to reiterate, um, a lot of the athletes at the high school have heard this, but in July, we'll be moving into what we're calling the WIA contact days. Um, the WIA has opened up the possibility of spring athletes to actually have some kind of activity in July. During the finance committee, we went up, went through the document that was prepared for that. That will be sent out to all families, maybe even tonight, yet or tomorrow morning, because we've kind of flushed out some concerns. Basically, what families will see in that document are, uh, sport-specific ways to physically distance, keep things sanitized, you know, try to keep, uh, meeting all of the guidelines that, that we're trying to work under, as well as some overarching beliefs that we have as far as, you know, recommended math, mask, we talked about that for a long time, that the rules and guidelines that are shared must be followed, they're not, uh, that contact days are voluntary, and all of that is laid out in that document. So, that will be forthcoming to families. Um, I also wanted to say that I, I think this month, we have shown why it's really important to have a first reading of policies and handbooks and all those kinds of things, and then a second reading, because, um, in the course of this month, some things have changed that we proposed in our first readings last month, and so I wanted to highlight some of those. We had made some updates to the employee handbook, and we met with the LMEA. I, uh, I think it was only teacher representatives that brought this to our attention. But one thing that is in the employee handbook that we would like to change since the last time we shared those updates with you is the definition of homeschooling. Within the employee handbook, it talks about how much teachers would be paid if homeschooled. Homeschooling is a legally defined term in state statute that refers to a doctor's prescription to have services provided outside the school setting. It does not reflect what we've just been doing since March. So, to clarify that homeschooling is defined in state statute, we're going to include that state statute.
You mean like homebound, not actually homeschooling?
Yes. Obstruction.
Somebody's mic is on and there's a dog.
Sorry. Hi. Another thing is that, um, in this rapidly evolving political climate, I would say, that we've been seeing, there was a suggested, uh, change to the high school handbook under the student dressing conduct, conduct. And so, I've included that change there, um, and you'll see that under the dress code, it now explicitly reads, clothing that contains pictures of writing referring to, it always said alcoholic beverages, illegal drugs, tobacco, uh, oops, that's a question, sexual references, profanity, violence, suicide. The, the explicit words racist, discriminatory, harassing, deplamatory, inappropriate, or destructive are prohibited as well. Typically, the way that a, a dress code works in a school is that it's one of the few things that an administrator has judgment over. And if students are dressed in a way that are, that is disruptive, that can be addressed. And so, we have always addressed these issues in that way, but this is just more explicit. So, that is another change since the first reading of the handbook, the high school handbook. And then that will trickle into the other handbooks as well. Okay? Um, and I just, I was so happy that Ms. Thompson went through all of what I believe are the proactive, um, steps that we've taken in the past years in terms of, um, social justice. I feel like we, we all have room for improvement, we all have issues to address, and, um, we have very actively brought equity and social justice to the forefront of all of our conversations. Um, our school report card, our civil rights report have, have given us hard data that drives a lot of our awareness in those areas. And, uh, I am just very confident that we'll continue to address those issues in a very proactive way at the forefront of all of it. So, um, any questions about all of those things? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is community input. Do we have anyone who has asked to?
We do. Joanne Rousseau with LMEA.
And with dogs in our house that were just barking, so I apologize for that. Hopefully, they'll be quiet. I only have a couple of sentences to read here. The LMEA stands with the Black Lives Matter movement and is committed to supporting our members and implementing a curriculum that supports racial justice. We believe we have been an inclusive community with regards to students who may have been marginalized and support this movement that, to bring about justice for people of color. We are encouraging our LME members to take racial, see, I said that again, I said that wrong again, racial justice training offered through our union. So, and, and I would, you know, I've been a part of many of the things that we've also done at the elementary school under Amanda, and, and we have, I think, addressed and looked forward from years back already. We, we were looking forward for this equity and working with people of color. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rousseau. Was there anyone else?
That is all that registered.
Well, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and specifically that includes the minutes of the May 11th regular board meeting, the approval of the May 11 finance committee proceedings, the approval of the May 18 facility committee proceedings, approval of the treasures report, approval of vouchers and invoices, approval of co-curricular letters of resignation, approval of support staff letters of assignment. So, I would ask if any board member would wish to consider any of those items separately. Hearing no interest in doing that, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion or questions? During then, may we please have a roll call vote?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litter.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now, we move to the action items. The approval of the Lake Mills Area School District Employee Handbook for the 2020-21 school year.
So, since our first reading last month, as I had mentioned in my report, the definition of "probound instruction," as contrasted to our virtual experience, is clarified with the addition of state statute. And then we need to add just one sentence or two into, uh, and I'm just going to read that to you, because we've added this since we last talked. Employees who transfer between employment sub, it's a student officer, employees who transfer between employment categories will have their number of vacation days determined by their new position's vacation allocation only. Anyone who have years of service are not used when determining vacation allocation if the previous position did not qualify for vacation days. So, you're all saying, what is that? So, if we have an employee who has been in a position that did not have vacation days, a parent educator, a food service worker, we have some secretaries that are more related to the school year, if they then move into a position that does have vacation days, um, we don't take all those years that they've had in other position to place them into their vacation days. They start the vacation day accumulation at the position, when they're hired for the position, that accumulates vacation days. So, we got that? And so, it's been our practice, and we just need to clarify that. Okay, so those are the only two changes since the first reading.
So, would entertain a motion for approval of the handbook.
I move the board approve the Lake Mills Area School District Employee Handbook as revised for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Move and seconded. Questions? On the motion? Comments? During then, make it, we have a roll call vote.
Don Delaney.
Abstain.
Amy Litter.
Aye.
David Rado.
Abstain.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
Motion carries three ayes, two extensions. Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Lake Mills High School Handbook for the 2020-21 school year.
Again, the, the addition since the first reading is the words in the dress code that that specifically lists racist, discriminatory, harassing, deplamatory, inappropriate, or destructive.
A motion for approval.
I move the Board to approve the Lake Mills High School Student Handbook as revised for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? During that, a roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now we have the approval of the NEOLAP Policy Update, Volume 29, Number 1+, whatever that is.
That's because policies are changing all the time as well. So these are the updates that the Policy Committee shared with you in their first reading last month. And all of those are referenced for you in the Board Doc platform.
I move the Board to approve the NEOLAP Policy Update, Volume 29, Number 1+.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is the approval of the agreement for the alternate school program.
So you may recall, this is the next two action items. We have agreements with Johnson Creek to use shared services for our alternative ed program, which we call CAF, Crossroads 2 Alternative Program, and also the Early Childhood Special Education Programming. And these are the 660301 agreements that allows us to do that.
I move the Board to approve the 660.0301 Agreement with the Johnson Creek School District for Crossroads 2 Programming for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? This is an ongoing program that we have, that we've been doing.
Yes, it is.
Very successfully.
Very successfully. A great action for kids for whom the brick and mortar here at the high school is not their best fit for somebody.
So, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
She's muted.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
And the next is the approval for similar agreement for early childhood special education.
I forgot to mention in my first comment is that there is no increase in cost over the last school year in the year of these contracts. I move to approve the 660301 Agreement with the Johnson Creek School District for Early Childhood Special Education Programming for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? During that, we have a roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Amy Litcher. Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Next is the approval of professional staff resignation for the 2020-21 school year.
Unfortunately, one of our new staff members will not be continuing with us. She explains why in her letter. So we're very happy for her, but sad for us.
I move the Board to approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Danielle Albright, 5th grade teacher, and thank her for her time with the students of the Lake Mills community.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? Megan, can we have a roll call, please?
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney. Robert Timprio.
Aye.
And approval of professional staff contracts for the 2020-21 school year.
So we continue to march on and interview, and we just have three outstanding candidates for you here again tonight. As you may recall, this 5th and 6th grade choir position has been talked about for several years. And Ms. Kreizik has moved to the Lake Mills area and actually has done this very job in a part-time capacity in other places. So we were thrilled to find her and be able to offer that to her. And then Ms. Italiano was actually a student teacher in our district and has done extensive something. So we know her and have actually witnessed her teaching, which has been a plus as we do all these interviews virtually right now.
That sounds fantastic. I move the Board to approve the following professional staff contracts for the 2020-21 school year and welcome them to the Lake Mills community. Ms. Allison James, 7th and 8th grade math teacher, Ms. Kayla Kreizik, 5th and 6th grade choir, and Ms. Nicole Italiano, 5th grade teacher.
Second.
Moving seconded. Questions? Ms. Trey, with these approvals, do we have other openings still?
Parent educator positions.
But professional staff, this will, this will complete.
For now, right?
Professional contracts are due back in June 15th, and so.
With any luck.
With any luck.
Roll call vote, please.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney. Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
And approval of staff retirement.
This is actually a retirement letter which reflects a retirement at the end of 2020-21. And Mrs. Sweeney has known that would be her retirement date, and we have planned, and we're very intentional about the second A-School School Council that we added, knowing that this was going to happen. So she's really been helping us with that transition.
I move the Board to approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Diane Sweeney at the end of the 2020-21 school year and thank her for her 30 years of dedication to the students of the Lake Mills School District.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
I just have to say, I had Mrs. Sweeney, then Mrs. Radiman, her first two years teaching. Fantastic, sad loss.
It is. I communicated with her on scholarship issue, and in her email was a listing of all of her titles. And there's a lot of titles. We would have to fill a lot of slots. So, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney. Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the approval of summer school plans for 2020.
This isn't something that we typically bring to you. Typically, you just approve the dates of summer school, but because we have deviated so far from our traditional program into going into this virtual summer school, we thought that it would be important to bring it to you for formal recognition. With that, we will, if this should pass, we will move forward with notifying, confirming this with parents.
I move the Board to approve the virtual summer school for the summer of 2020 with the understanding that limited face-to-face may be carefully added in the future.
Second.
Okay. Moving seconded. Any questions or comments? During that, we have a roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Amy Litcher. Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the High School Blacktop.
Oh, summer school contract.
Oh, boy. Wait. I missed something, didn't I? Approval of summer school contracts? I'm going to miss it.
You know, this is a difficult thing as well because, you know, teaching summer school is a wonderful opportunity for our teachers and our parent educators and other support staff to, you know, participate with our kids during the summer and actually earn some more money. So this is a significant, significant decrease in our staffing and actually even the way that we are paying staff. And so staff are being paid an hourly rate for creating these classes in a virtual environment and then toward meeting with students. And this reduction in hours and this reduction in, you know, gross pay to them has allowed us to continue virtually with the, about 75% loss in the number of minutes that we pick up from summer school. So we have carefully talked with staff about comfortable teaching anymore in the virtual. We really tried to assign staff who have been with us for years, you know, positions, but, you know, we know that this is quite a limited list compared to what we presented.
I move the Board to approve the summer school contracts as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any additional comments or questions?
You know, I did have one, and it didn't occur to me till just now. Do we, do we think it's of any benefit to, if we have a few classes that have, you know, some space in them, to put it back out there and say, hey, we've got these classes if anybody's interested in signing up?
We're going to be doing that, and that's what I meant. We're going to roll this out. Then parents will know what classes have been cut.
Oh, right.
Classes they'll be doing. And we do have a rolling registration so that, you know, that would be our hope that we would continue to bring more kids in.
Great.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney. Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now the Blacktop.
These proposals were reviewed at both the Facility Committee and our Finance Committee. We received three bids, and we are recommending to approve the bid from Pablocke Paving for $43,150,000.
I move the Board to approve the bid from Pablocke Paving, Walutosa, for high school blacktop projects in the amount of $43,150,000.
Second.
Moving seconded. This one's been pretty well vetted, so I think we can have a roll call.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney. Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wow, I'm always impressed. The next item is the approval of gifts. Our community's been so supportive. So it entertain a motion to accept the gifts.
I move the Board to accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. Crystal Farms' donation of an assortment of products for staff appreciation valued at over $150. Pam and Terry Stripes' donation of gifts for staff appreciation in the amount of $160. Beth and Mike Denzine's donation of $162.20 to Family Connections. Real Hope's donation of staff appreciation bags for 227 employees valued at over $1,500. Jim Ordle's donation of spring coach pay of $1,911.34 to the Lake Mills High School Soccer Program and Grab and Go Meal Program. Guided Ways' donation of $4,535 for COVID relief funds. Middle School Playworks grant from the Watertown Health Foundation in the amount of $16,500. And the 73 families who donated their end of the shortened year refunds to our Family Connections program.
Wow, second.
Comments?
Wow.
I would just add that this refund project has been massive. It's taken all of our secretaries and office staff a month, maybe? Because, you know, we prorated parking passes and bus fees, and then there were field trip fees and lunch accounts and.
And then high school semester course fees.
Course fees, and every family.
At the high school, almost every family.
Every family was contacted. And, you know, we were just thrilled that 73 families, you know, donated that to the relief funds in Family Connections. So that was awesome.
So can we still do that? I didn't even think about it.
We are always, oh, we're always taking donations for Family Connections. And that, those are the funds. When we don't, we're not going to be able to offer the feeding program past June 30th. And so any families that still need any of our resources, those kinds of activities and items can come out of that Family Connections fund. So we're always taking donations there.
So can we have, like, our lunch balance or whatever? Because I just had the funds moved over to my lunch balance, to the kids' lunch balance. But can we say, hey, take our lunch balance and put it in that program?
Wendy.
Because we've already made that change. I can see, I mean.
Don't worry about it. I just wondered. It's fine.
I know this happened process, so.
It was an extraordinary, extraordinary undertaking to do that.
Right.
Okay.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Timprio.
Aye.
Motion carries, and again, our sincere thanks to the diversity of our community. Upcoming Board Agenda items.
So we have set the next special meeting for June 22 at 6 o'clock. We'll be talking most about budget, but if there are any updates to our summer school programming, we will share that at that time.
And is it your expectation, Wendy, that on the 22nd of June